...Memorial Weekend, Councilmember Connolly will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Connolly.
President.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Thank you. And first item of business is a proclamation for National Police Week. And I believe Chief Eberhart is here to receive this. And it reads, "National Police Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual rights of a free people, soldiers in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is known that every two days an American police officer dies in the line of duty, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. And whereas the City of Fortuna desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of our police officers. Now therefore, I, Mike Johnson, Mayor of Fortuna, proclaim the week of May 11th to May 17th, 2025, to be National Police Week, and call upon all citizens to give special honor and sincere appreciation to the police officers of all this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I further call upon our citizenry to make every effort to express our gratitude to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day and return knowing they are protected by people willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Signed, this fifth day of May, 2025, City of Fortuna, State of California."
Chief Matt Eberhart, thank you, honorable fair and counsel, for the proclamation. On behalf of the --
On behalf of the Police Department and our officers, we very much appreciate this. During the week, we will be wearing our mourning bands across our badge to honor those that have been lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
What old people there?
All right. Our next item of business is oral comments from the public for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. If there's anyone that'd like to speak to a matter that's not on the agenda, this is time. And we see none at this time. So we come to the consent calendar with items A, B, and C. Reported disbursement, City Council minutes and City Council minutes from the 21st for the special meeting, regular meeting. Would anybody like to pull anything?
There's more than that.
Oh. That one was a big sentence there. So we approve grant funds from the Coastal Conservancy for acquisition of 237 acres on the Lower Eel, review of mayor's recommendations and appointees to the Planning Commission, approved police lieutenant Jason Caddell as authorized signer for the City of Fortuna, hydration station donation. Anybody want?
G.
So we have item G.
Just thinking that's a great thing. That's a great need for the hydration station there at the River Lodge for dogs, the dog bowl included, because there is a lot of people that walk there. So I think that's a really good donation, and I appreciate Fortuna Sunrise Rotary for that.
Any other? Any public comment on these items?
Good evening. My name's Chris Broadstock. I'm the -- this year's president of Fortuna Sunrise Rotary. I'm here to make a comment on Agenda Item 4G regarding the multi-use hydration station installation at the River Lodge. It's traditional that each year, the Rotary Club president chooses a community development project to complete with fundraising and matching funds from Rotary International. In the past, we've successfully partnered with the City of Fortuna for these projects on public property. A few examples are the Eel River Overlook on the Riverwalk Trail, the Cement Cornhole Court in Newburgh Park, the picnic tables at Roanoke Park, and the fire pits at River Lodge. The hydration station I am proposing is a multipurpose water fountain. There are four water bubblers, including an ADA fountain, a pet bowl, and a water bottle filler. It is certified for outdoor use and includes a filter. Previous meetings with Jennifer Lorenzo and Jesse Towne have renewed the site -- have reviewed the site for compatibility. As a dog person, I wanted my Rotary project to focus on increasing the opportunities for dog-friendly spaces in town. Part of being a good pet owner is socializing and exercising our pets. The more spaces in town that the public can enjoy, the better. With the existing walking trail at Riverwalk and the potential development of city property in that area, this is an opportunity to enrich dog-friendly spaces and increase the public use of the city property along the Eel River. For these reasons, I ask for the City Council approval of the installation of the hydration station. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the donation. Any other public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Well, thank you. We come now to the business items, and I would tell you that business item E, adult sports team processing fee, has been pulled and will come back on May 19th. So that item is no longer on the agenda, but we do have our first one, the feasibility analysis for the Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Amy Nelson, City Manager. Before your council today is to receive a staff report on the feasibility analysis of an Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. As you may recall, the City Council authorized the interim City Manager, which was me at the time, to explore establishing an EFID. And then on October 21st, the City Council authorized us to execute a contract with Cosmot Companies to conduct the feasibility analysis of a Fortuna EFID. EFIDs can aid communities in funding a wide and diverse variety of public and capital improvement projects, and they are allowed by state law by capturing and leveraging property tax increment, or PTI, generated within EFID. And an EFID does not impose a new tax. Ultimately, what you do is you take property tax growth, and you set it aside in this district, and that property tax growth then funds future capital improvement projects. And so the feasibility analysis that Joe with Cosmot, he will walk you through that feasibility analysis, and we will look at some of those numbers and whether this is an option for the City of Fortuna or not. And I see that we have Joe in Zoom, on Zoom. There's Joe. Can you? Can you hear us, Joe?
I hear you great. Good evening.
Excellent. Go right ahead.
You got it. And thank you to the City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of the City Council. As the City Manager said, I'm Joe Diaz, Senior Vice President with Cosmot, privileged to be working for you on the analysis of the feasibility of this funding and financing tool. I've got a presentation that I will attempt to bring on screen here, and I'd certainly encourage your questions and commentary, along the way or at the end, however you see fit. I'm waiting for the slide to advance on my screen. Hopefully, it shows up on yours.
There we go.
Thank you. Apologies for that. As the City Manager laid out, this is a potential tool in your toolbox, this Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. Very importantly, as the City Manager said, it is not a way to add a new tax. It is an earmark of future property tax revenue growth meant to set aside funding for infrastructure improvements. And I'll go into more about what that means. To get to the punchline, when we look at different scenarios of how this could be implemented within Fortuna, we see a present value range of up to $80 million. That's what the utility of this tool is, the funding capacity of this tool is, and I'll walk through how we get there. The city, if it did decide to move forward at all with this type of tool, can choose to do so on its own, the city on its own. But what we would say, the way you get the most bang for your buck with this type of tool, is if you get a partner from another public agency such as the County of Humboldt that could essentially match your allocation to this funding tool, bringing in net new dollars that you would otherwise not have available to the city to fund projects within the city. We can talk about how that works out. Not only is it this tool itself that can generate these revenues and be used to do things like issue bonds if you so chose, but by going down this potential path, you would additionally be increasing your scoring for state grants especially, particularly state grants that have anything to do with housing, as the State Department of Housing and Community Development increases scoring for communities that do explicitly these types of tools. If the city did decide at some point to move forward with this type of tool, an immediate next step, as the City Manager mentions in the staff report, would be to reach out to the county at some level, staff and elected, could be either or both, to discuss potential partnership. I'll review just at a high level, points that were just made about how this works, and then I'll get right to the point on some of the numbers. We've stated multiple times, this is not a new tax. The way it works is a boundary could be drawn for some portion of the city, and as the assessed property value within that boundary, as that value increases over time, what you'd be doing is taking some piece of the future share of property tax revenue that the city has, some piece of the future share generated just within that boundary, and putting it aside in a special fund. We like to think of it sometimes as the retirement account analogy, where again, you get the most bang for your buck if it's not just your dollars, not just your city dollars being put aside in that retirement fund, but if you're getting a match, the analogy would be like an employer match to this retirement account, and the employer, and this analogy would be the County of Humboldt, matching your allocation dollar for dollar or percentage for percentage, again, putting dollars in your infrastructure fund that would otherwise not be there to fund projects within the city, and it has a defined timeline, it's temporary. And it'll just be some portion of the future growth. It is not customary to allocate all of the future property tax within the boundary, but just some piece of it, making sure that there are still dollars flowing to the general fund. And to be very clear, we would not be, you would not be allocating any piece of today's property tax, any piece of the property tax you received today, just some piece of the future growth beyond what you received today. There are rules that I'll just highlight, a couple of the fundamentals of which, they are long-term districts, they are authorized to be 45 years or more in duration, it can be made shorter, the City Council would control all of those deal terms, but they can be up to 45 years or longer. There's a new entity that gets set up to govern these tools, it's called a public financing authority. Very importantly, that body that governs these is, includes members of the City Council. If the county is your partner in this district, the Board of Supervisors would have some level of participation in this body. And interestingly, this body would also have at least two seats for members of the public that the City Council would appoint to this board. This would be the board that governs this body, that guides its activities, but very importantly, there is a plan that gets drafted, so-called infrastructure financing plan that outlines all the key deal terms, how many dollars, what are you using it for, over what time period, and very importantly, that infrastructure financing plan is independently required to be approved by the City Council before this public financing authority does anything with these dollars. If the County of Humboldt is the city's partner in this endeavor, that infrastructure financing plan would additionally be required to be approved by the full county Board of Supervisors. There is a mandatory set of public meetings and hearings to form one of these, but very importantly, there's no public vote to form one of these. The reason being is this, again, is not a new tax or assessment or anything like that, because of that, there's no vote. But what there is in its place at the end of this series of public meetings and hearings is a protest opportunity, meaning that landowners or residents within the boundary that gets drawn, they have the ability to come out, writing or verbally protesting, really any part of this. They can protest just the concept of the tool, they can protest the way the process was done, literally anything could be protested. And if more than 50% of that combined number of landowners and residents within the boundary, more than 50% of those folks protest, you cannot move forward. I'll just mention about 31 of these formed across the state. We've not come anywhere close to a protest, usually as soon as we make it very clear that it This would be the board that governs this body, that guides its activities, but very importantly, there is a plan that gets drafted, so-called infrastructure financing plan that outlines all the key deal terms, how many dollars, what are you using it for, over what time period, and very importantly, that infrastructure financing plan is independently required to be approved by the city council before this public financing authority does anything with these dollars. If the County of Humboldt is the city's partner in this endeavor, that infrastructure financing plan would additionally be required to be approved by the full county board of supervisors. There is a mandatory set of public meetings and hearings to form one of these, but very importantly, there's no public vote to form one of these. The reason being is this, again, is not a new tax or assessment or anything like that. Because of that, there's no vote. But what there is in its place at the end of this series of public meetings and hearings is a protest opportunity, meaning that landowners or residents within the boundary that gets drawn, they have the ability to come out, writing or verbally protesting really any part of this. They can protest just the concept of the tool, they can protest the way the process was done, literally anything could be protested. And if more than 50% of that combined number of landowners and residents within the boundary, more than 50% of those folks protest, you cannot move forward. I'll just mention about 31 of these formed across the state. We've not come anywhere close to a protest. Usually, as soon as we make it very clear that it is not a new tax, it addresses the key concerns of the constituents that we encounter. The types of things that it can pay for, it's an infrastructure financing district, so this is a tool about infrastructure. Some examples, certainly roadway, things like interchanges, storm, stormwater flood control, parking, parks in open space, libraries, remediation of contaminated land, affordable housing is unauthorized use, broadband infrastructure, that's broadband internet infrastructure. There's a category about different improvements to address climate change response, and it just includes some examples within that, like improvements to address wildfire, flood control, sea level rise, extreme heat, drought. It's really a list that starts with the words including but not limited to. And then there's also a category for improvements to facilities utilized by small businesses, and there is a definition of small businesses in terms of revenues and employees. So all of this, again, starts with those words, including but not limited to, but a clear emphasis on infrastructure. In our experience, why cities and counties go down this path, number one, it's just return on investment. We are not seeing any city council, any county board of supervisors do this if you're not better off from a fiscal dollars and cents basis than you would otherwise be if you didn't go down this path. So a lot of it is just about catalyzing private sector investment by solving for infrastructure needs, like flood control and key roadway improvements that are truly needed to catalyze growth that would otherwise not happen, or not happen as quickly, or not happen as intensely. So straight dollars and cents, if you're not better off for doing it, then not, we're not seeing agencies do it. Aside from that, the common themes we see are job creation, housing production, and just solving for infrastructure that's been deficient in many cases for many, many years. The second one, that's less obvious, but I hinted at it earlier, it's the ability to attract other money, especially with the grants, when there are state grants that give you better scoring if you do one of these. We just call this a way to make yourself a magnet for other public money, OPM, as we use it, as a key reason for doing this. So not to belabor what other folks do, but I mentioned about 31 of these formed so far elsewhere across the state. The nearest one geographically is unincorporated County of Humboldt, Samoa Peninsula. If we went further north, City of Mount Shasta, small community that actually formed just earlier this calendar year, and then proceeding south, of course, many others, but we formed Napa, the Sacramento area, Central Valley of California, many different contexts, cities doing it alone, counties doing it alone, and unincorporated areas. About seven so far, cities and counties partnering together, and the sorts of things that these things pay for vary so highly. Some are roadway, water, and sewer focused, some are affordable housing focused, some are transit focused in the more urban areas, and it all varies quite highly. So to talk about Fortuna for a moment, we looked at multiple scenarios for what a boundary one of these financing districts could look like within Fortuna. We're going over two here. The first one is outlined in yellow here. It's focused on the mill site, specific plan area here in the center, but also incorporating other properties adjacent to the main corridor here, where in our discussions with city staff, we just saw some feasibility for improvement, for revitalization, for reinvestment over the next five, 10 years, even beyond. All of that in the yellow boundary is about 372 acres. It's about 12% of the city in terms of acreage. Today, it's about 178 million in existing assessed property value. We can consider this larger boundary of, maybe it's just for reference, so you know, what if you put your entire city into one of these financing districts? That is not a common thing to do, but it is possible if you put your entire 3,000 acres or so in one of these financing districts. Well, I'll walk through some numbers of what that looks like. Just to get to the kind of punchline, the reason we don't see that happen a lot is a lot of the strategy behind using these tools is trying to generate enough funding through this tool so that it's actually worth it, you generate enough dollars to pay for some real projects. But at the same time, it's balancing, keeping the general fund healthy, keeping enough revenues flowing unencumbered to your general fund, just to keep the lights on, so to speak, providing those day-to-day municipal services. And because of that balancing act, most of the time, we don't see cities and counties go as large as the entire city or unincorporated community. In our discussion so far about what are the sorts of things this district might pay for if it were implemented within Fortuna, roadway interchange improvements have come up multiple times in our discussion, probably not surprisingly, 12th Street, Kenmore, other pedestrian access to Eel River, downtown improvements, you could think of streetscape, beautification improvements, those are certainly eligible, other multimodals, sort of transportation-type improvements, trails, parks in open space, affordable housing. This is, we can consider this sort of a starter list of just what's come up so far in Cosmot's discussion with city staff. This would be an area where, you know, certainly, city council would, could drive the ship and form what gets on this list, and if it did move forward and there was a desire to pursue partnership with the county, it could be also a place where our county partners could weigh in on what they might want to see prioritized with this tool, but within the city. I just want to touch at a high level at least on what some of the numbers shake out to. This whole slide is about what if we did that smaller boundary, that's about 372 acres, that was focused on the mill sites, specific plan area, and the main corridors. I mentioned earlier that if you form this district, you're not allocating typically all of the future property tax within that boundary, but just some piece of it. So some of the scenarios that we looked at going top-down on this table, letters A through F, you can do something like, you know, 35%, a little over a third of the share of your, just the city's share of future property tax within the boundary. We looked at a scenario where what if the city did 50%? That's a common number we see, 50% of the city's share of future property tax within the boundary, could go even higher, like 75%. But scenarios D, E, and F, we view as more financially favorable to the city, and those are scenarios where you do get that match from another agency such as the county, where they match you percentage for percentage, and those are scenarios D, E, and F. Moving to the right, these are just different ways to look at using the money and how much that translates into. So maybe I'll just pick the column titled Year 10 to highlight what we mean. Year 10 means what if you form this district, the revenue starts trickling in year 1, year 2, year 3, all the way through year 10? And what if you decided in year 10 that you actually wanted to issue a bond based on that revenue stream? What does all that get you in terms of dollars you can actually spend on projects? And we'll see this range from hundreds of thousands to about 3 million in letter F in this column. That's what we're talking about within 10 years. The districts are allowed to go beyond that. We mentioned 45-plus years. If we went beyond year 10 and we looked at just on a present value basis, what does this whole revenue stream mean in today's dollars, accounting for inflation? That's this range of about 5 million on the low end to 22, almost 23 million on the high end. That's sort of the present value, accounting for inflation, that's what this revenue stream is worth. The far right, just because it's here, I should explain it. What if we did not account for inflation? What's this, the total nominal dollar amount? We don't like talking in these terms. We find that it's not really based in reality, because you're not talking about today's dollars. For that reason, we really prefer to talk about the present value. That's really what you get for your money when you go through this. Everything on this page I mentioned was the smaller boundary alternative. The following page is that same framework of analysis, but that larger citywide boundary. Spice it to say, all of the numbers get bigger when you go with such a large district boundary. We would say this puts you in that realm where, yeah, you've got a lot more dollars to spend, you could do a lot more projects, that's great. But then the concern, you know, I'll say just from Cosmot's perspective, that concern is just, you know, managing your general fund health. Are we, let's be careful not to give too much of the future general fund property tax dollars away to this district, even if it means you're getting a match from the county. We just need to make sure there's enough left over for the city to keep the lights on, as I said earlier, provide those day-to-day services. So the strategy with the larger boundary is, yep, you can get more dollars, potentially a greater match from the county, but it just becomes that balancing act again of general I talked about several city-county partnerships up and down the state. There are seven so far. Won't belabor this topic, but there's fortunately lots of precedent for cities and counties of finding ways to make these things work in mutually beneficial ways up and down the state. Return on investment is key. We'd expect first, this would need to be demonstrated for the city in terms of dollars and cents, housing, job creation, attracting other money that wouldn't be available. And then we would also expect, let's say if we were approaching the County of Humboldt at your direction, to be partners, we would expect them to want to see the exact same thing. What does it mean for my county general fund if I'm your partner? How does this translate into a dollars and cents win return on investment for me? And that's analysis that obviously we've done many times across the state, and we know they would want that, just like you would want that. What's in it for me? Dollars and cents. So the potential path forward, I won't walk through line by line, but there's a very prior prescribed process in the state law that requires a lot of transparency, to be quite honest with you. There are several public meetings and hearings accompanied by mailing notices, newspaper notices, website notices, where essentially what you're doing is drafting up that business plan, what is called the infrastructure financing plan, and vetting it quite publicly, not only with the city council, but also with that new entity that gets set up, the public financing authority, and that the county is your partner. It would be separately reviewed with the county board of supervisors at a number of meetings and hearings, each duly noticed, and that that last step, which is letter I on this table, there is that protest opportunity where, again, the property owners and residents within the boundary additionally have a chance to protest if they don't like any part of it. For today, as was mentioned by the city manager, it's about, you know, maybe hearing about this for the very first time, getting additional questions answered, any feedback you'd like to offer at this, at this point, and then as described in the staff report, if this is of interest, at least preliminarily, to the city council, the next step might be to approach the county to see if they have any interest in being your partner if you went down this path. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time. I'd be very happy to address any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for helping to make it digestible. And I'll ask now if there's any council questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. I'm hoping I'm understanding this correctly. At this point, the city doesn't have a lot of money. So what we're talking about is taking some of our future funds, and instead of using it where we might need it, we're going to put that like in a savings account for later use. And my second part of that is, the county's in the same situation we're in. They don't have a lot of money. So where does the money come from that, you know, the county would give to us?
Thank you. Thank you, council member. City manager, should I address that? That be appropriate?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you, for the merit. Thank you. Your understanding is exactly right, council member. It is, it is indeed setting aside a piece of future revenues that would otherwise go in the general fund and putting aside some piece of it, not in the general fund, in a restricted fund for infrastructure, and the same would apply for the county. It would be obviously nothing that's in their budget today, but some piece of future revenues. The only way we see that make any sense, if there's a, there's a defensible case that you on the city council believe, that they on the county board of supervisors believe, that by doing this, you're actually growing the pie bigger than it would be otherwise. So you're not just allocating dollars that would have been there anyway, but by making the investment in the infrastructure, you're growing the property tax revenue stream than it would have been, larger than it would have been otherwise, so that you can afford to allocate some of it into the district and be at least made whole, but more assertively, you'd be better off in a general fund perspective than for doing this. And that's a case that needs to be defensible to you.
Okay, but I'm still kind of leery about, I like the idea of having a savings account, but if you don't have money to put in a savings account, I don't necessarily think that's a good idea. I don't know if I'm misunderstanding or...
It is, Councilmember Trent, it is money we do not currently have. It is leveraging future growth. And so it's setting aside that future growth and using those future, future growth dollars to build your infrastructure and thereby increase your property tax base even further. So it's, it's a way to leverage your dollars and invest in your community. And hopefully, as Joe said, increase your property tax base, because without those investments in infrastructure, your property tax base would not grow as much.
Okay, I'm still not completely understanding, but...
That is okay. Yeah.
So would it be fair to say we're getting a loan that we're going to be paying back through future property tax increases, or a bond, I guess, instead of a loan? Is that... I mean, at what, at what point would we actually receive the money, you know, to make the improvements?
Joe, do you want to go ahead with that?
Happy to. Thank you. Yes. So the first few years, just to set the expectation now, the first few years after you form this district, it's a little bit anticlimactic. You formed it, and maybe the value within the district boundary is $100 million, and nothing about the revenue that you as a city receive from that $100 million of value today will change. You will, your general fund will still receive all of that apportionment in future years. But it's when that $100 million, even if it just grows by 2% next year and goes to 102 million, it's just that 2 million delta between next year's 102 and this year's 100. Just on that 2 million delta, some piece of that, let's say 50% of your share of it, would be the amount that's put into this restricted fund, and ideally, you'd get the county's piece as well, getting that net new dollars. So that just trickles in in the first few years, because that growth is pretty small, and we'd say no one should be bonding against that because it's not even worth bonding against. You wouldn't get enough of dollars from that bond. And the way these districts work is you actually have to wait for that trickle to become a more meaningful revenue stream before it can be bonded against. You can't bond against it today based on what anyone thinks it's going to be three, four, or five years from now. The municipal bond market wouldn't support that. So you actually have to demonstrate you actually have the dollars coming in into the fund until you could actually bond against it. So a year-five bond is bonded against year-five revenue, not what you think it's going to be in year seven, year eight, et cetera. But to be very clear, when that bond is issued, what is being used to service that bond is just this revenue stream that has been set aside through this district, a property owner, a resident, or a business owner. No one's going to have to pay an additional tax. We always say, usually the property owner, the resident business, doesn't know at all whether they're in this financing district or not, because it doesn't change their property tax bill at all. Everything we're talking about is almost a behind-the-scenes, like a budget allocation exercise, and it's that revenue stream that issues the bond, no additional tax. Hopefully, that helps more than it confuses.
And what is, so what is the risk of setting up the district and, you know, I guess, promising to make the improvements, but then the development never actually happens? You know, is that, is there, is there, I mean, what are some of the negatives that we should be considering?
Of course. Thank you, council member. I, I'll take two scenarios. One is you form this and you don't do anything with it yet. You don't issue a bond yet because the revenue is so small. So let's say you form this, four years down the line, nothing's happened, and you'd say, all right, what's the damage done? Well, it's whatever you've allocated in those first four years, and typically, it's on the order of maybe tens of thousands per year. It's a relatively small dollar amount in the grand scheme of things, still a lot of money, but tens of thousand dollars, those are now funds that sit in the separate fund that's not in the general fund. And so if at that point you needed money to do an emergency repair of, I don't know, city fleet vehicle or something like that, or a roadway, those funds are not available to the general fund. They are available if you wanted to use it for a qualified, an eligible project, like an infrastructure improvement, but the general fund can't just... infrastructure improvement, but the general fund can't just grab those dollars. They're in a separate restricted fund. In that scenario, what you could do, in the case of, let's say, a fiscal emergency, you could choose to dissolve the financing district, and, and we would say that would have all been sort of wasted effort. You did this, it didn't work out, now we need to unravel it. You could still reclaim those dollars to your general fund. It's just a little bit of a process to unwind it. We'd say that's the less severe example, where you haven't issued any bonds, as an example. You can just close it all up and get your money back, but it's just a bit of a pain to do that administratively. The more severe example is, let's say, five years down the road, you have actually, you had a, a level of revenues sufficient to do a bond, and let's say you were able to make some 12th Street or Kenmar interchange improvements, or, or advance some funding toward that. The reality is, whatever that revenue stream is that you've dedicated for that bond, that's sort of locked in at that point. You cannot reclaim that piece back to your general fund. You have to be, you've, you've now pledged to honor that, whatever, half million or million-dollar payment every year for the period of the bond, 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, and your risk is, you, you, you're not able to get those dollars back as a city i- if you really needed that. That is really the risk.
I had one more question. When you talked about the infrastructure, using it for infrastructure, are you talking about using it for cities' infrastructure? Because we can't, we can't do infrastructure for subdivisions. That's the developer that does that. So what infrastructure are you talking about?
Councilmember Trent, we specifically talked about the 12th Street and Kenmar interchanges. Those projects are significantly costly projects that will, we will try to receive grant dollars. We have not been successful in that, but no matter what, we will need grant match dollars, probably somewhere in the $5 to $10 million range, and we don't have those dollars currently. And so this was one financial tool that could potentially get us there.
Okay, that makes more sense.
And actually, the time element in there might actually work out with the development and the building of the infrastructure for Kenmar, because the development isn't ready to move forward yet. Obviously, the earlier we can get a hold of the money to do the intersections would be better, but it, I, it's going to take a few years to save that up, so that will actually work out in our favor. And if something doesn't work out, and we haven't issued any bonds, we're not at risk at that point. So we do have a decision to make whether to just table it and wait, or to move forward and explore. But if we're done here, any other questions from council?
Just out of curiosity, what sort of interest rates do, are charged for bonds that are, that finance these sort of projects?
Thank you, council member. The, the, obviously, changes with time. 2024, we saw one out of the Bay Area at a 5% coupon. Today, that would be higher. Today, I, I think that would be five and three quarters, maybe as high as 6%. At tax exemption rates, which, which of course are more favorable to a, sort of a private sector investor, if, for, for yourself and others who are familiar with just generally the public finance world, cities and counties, but cities certainly use the, the lease revenue mechanism. Some know them as certificates of participation or COPs, just a common way of paying for stuff like police stations, fire stations, different sorts of infrastructure. Those involve a pledge of, of general fund revenue, and often a, a general fund backstop. It's sort of like putting your credit score on the line as a city. And those you might get, let's say, for like 4.5%. This would be like at least a percent more than that, because with these tools, you don't have teeth in the general fund. Your general fund credit score is not pledged, so to speak. So you have to pay a little bit more, maybe 1%, maybe as high as 1.5% more than you would than that more traditional mechanism that does have teeth in your general fund credit.
Thanks. Okay. Before we, is there any public comment on this item?
Hi there, Julie Martin. I have a question for the presenter. Who manages the program? Who manages the money?
Just as a reminder, public commenters don't ask questions. They direct them to the council, and then the council can, after public comment is closed, they can then direct staff to answer a question if they so choose.
Sorry. I didn't know the procedure. So I'd like to know who manages the fund and what percentage they get of the savings. So if this company manages the funds for us?
Well, the, yeah, where the funds are deposited and where they're managed, as far as he brought up, and I'll let Joe answer this.
Happy to. Yeah, so just to make very clear, we don't get any cut of the revenues. Appreciate the question and happy to answer it transparently. Our firm is not involved in that world like a, a, I don't know, like a investment advisor or anything like that. No. So it's, I'm going to just build on the question. The way we're compensated is just like our contract, 27 grand or whatever it was. It's just hourly fee. We do the work, and you decide whether or not you want to move forward. Doesn't affect our compensation. Just to be clear and transparent, if you did decide to move forward and do an implementation, we'd love to do that work for you and help you do it, but it's as a, just, you know, kind of fixed fee, hourly proposal that we would submit, that you could approve or decline. But the city manages the fund. This gets put aside in an infrastructure fund, and it's a fund that you, as a city council, can access to implement your projects. The way that it gets, I would say, slightly more complicated is if the county does become your partner, they have a seat at the table of who manages this dol- these dollars, and I want to be specific about it. It's usually at least five people, this public financing authority, that gets set up. And when cities and counties are partnering, it's typically two members of the city council, one county supervisor, one member of the public appointed by the city, and one member of the public appointed by the county board of supervisors. And those five people, they sort of hold the keys, they administer this thing on an ongoing basis, but they're restricted to doing things with the money that are in the business plan written, the, the so-called infrastructure financing plan. And that's that plan that has to be separately approved independently by the city council and the county board of supervisors. So there's not like a private sector firm like mine that's managing the money or anything like that. No, it's still a public agency tool. You direct the funds. If you do decide to bond against that revenue stream at some point, a firm like ours can help with the bond issuance and could get like, like a fixed fee payment to help you do that bond issuance, but that's separately from managing the fund, perhaps as the question was stated.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, as I said, we do have a decision to make whether to move forward, no action, just file it and wait?
I don't see a problem with exploring it without committing to it, which I think that's what B is, right? Just checking with the county, see how they feel about it and exploring it?
Yes. Option, option B is to direct staff to contact the county of Humboldt and explore an EFAID partnership based on the first boundary that you saw, which was not the entire city.
Okay. And, and then at that point, after we do that and see where they are, then we can make a decision?
I, we can explore, we can have a, several exploratory conversations with the county. We would start with their staff, but at some point, we would need actual direction from the board of supervisors. And so once that direction, if that direction comes, then your city council would likely need to take action pretty quickly to determine if that's the route you want to go. But you, you may want to express more commitment before we go before the board of supervisors and ask for a share of their property tax growth.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. If we do and go forward and they say no, then, then we don't have to go any further?
No, we don't have to go any further. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, to me personally, seems like it would make the most sense if the county did participate. So finding out whether or not they are, you know, potentially interested in participating, I guess, would be a next step that would be good to find out.
Well, we would need, yeah, we need to explore to see what's beyond this.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah. We still don't have to make a commitment at that point, but we need to find out what's out there.
Right.
And then there may come a point when we have to make a commitment.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we ask staff to contact the county of Humboldt to explore the EFAID partnership based on the EFAID boundary presented as alternate one specific plan and other sites.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. It's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So we have a exploration to do. All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So we come now to item B, approve a supplemental budget request, which has changed, and our city manager has a staff report for this.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Yes, there has been substantial interest shown on both sides of the cannabis discussion, and it has become clear to staff that a more deliberate and thoughtful approach to this potential new program is necessary. And staff recommends pursuing city council and public education on cannabis through meetings and workshop by looking at an overview of state regulation, state regulations and cannabis business types and best practices. This would be the first step, this public education and workshop. And after the educational piece is completed, your council can direct, if you so choose, to further explore cannabis with a fiscal analysis, and then, if you so choose again, to potentially explore drafting a regulatory cannabis ordinance. And then, if you so choose again, you can consider a cannabis tax measure. And so the initial educational approach does not require a supplemental budget at this time. And this concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that your council has.
Is there any questions on this from council?
Is it possible to do a cannabis ordinance and a tax measure simultaneously, so we can kind of use the tax measure as kind of a potential gauge of the public's interest in just permitting it in general?
Well, first of all, you would hold a number of public hearings to develop a cannabis ordinance, and so the workshop is just a, an educational workshop, and then you would hold public hearings in order to develop the ordinance, but the ordinance has to be in place before you can do a ballot, ballot measure on cannabis.
Okay. Okay, we will open this up for public comment, but prior to that, I've got a few public comments submitted electronically and to read into the record. First one from Dan Belim. What goes on in Fortuna should not be all about revenue, but quality of life. One of the great things about Fortuna is it is a friendly, safe place to live and raise children. Cannabis sales and cultivation will adversely harm our quality of life here by promoting increased drug use and crime. Any money will be spent on increased law enforcement, and the city will be worse off in the long run. I urge the city council not be tempted by promises of revenue. I can't attend this meeting due to other commitments, but please read my letter. Thank you. Another from Dennis and Doris Miller. We are unable to attend the meeting. Please read this at the meeting on 5/5. To council members, we are not in favor of our city spending $49,750 on preparing a cannabis ordinance. We do realize the city needs more revenue, but do not feel this is the answer. As lifetime residents of Fortuna, we would appreciate the council allowing more time for input on this issue. Thank you, Dennis and Doris Miller. Another from Tim and Jody Tosti. Please provide for tonight's council meeting. To the Fortuna City Council, it is our understanding that at the May 5 meeting, you will consider granting a request to spend $50,000 from the general fund to pay a consultant to perform a number of these activities, including ultimately drafting an ordinance to allow cannabis business in Fortuna. This proposal seems like putting the cart before the horse, since to our knowledge, no public hearings have been held on this matter. We are Fortuna citizens who have read several news stories about Fortuna's budgetary problems where we recall the reported estimated tax revenue of $15,000 a year. This seems like a drop in the bucket in comparison to the budget deficit and not worth the potential downside. In a city that has long taken a position of prohibiting such businesses from operating, we believe it is fair and reasonable for the city to afford citizens more opportunity to hear the pros and cons of allowing cannabis businesses in town, and to also hear more about any alternative options to increase revenues and cut expenses. Prior to hiring a consultant, the council members and/or city staff could speak to our neighboring communities about how cannabis businesses are benefiting or not their cities and share this information with Fortuna. This should happen prior to spending money out of a very tight budget on an ordinance that may not ultimately be put to use. Unfortunately, we are not able to attend this particular council meeting, but would urge council members to allow more time for Fortuna citizens to participate in a more meaningful dialogue prior to spending this amount of money on a cannabis ordinance. Because we cannot attend this meeting, please read our comments into the record. Thank you. From Doug and Sue Smith. We are not in favor of our city spending $49,750 on preparing a commercial cannabis ordinance. We do realize the city needs more revenue, but do not feel this is the answer. Fortuna would end up like Needles, California. Thank you. And this is from Joe and Joyce Mitchell. Dear Fortuna City Council, as longtime residents of Fortuna, my husband and I would like to express our concern over a recent notice of a proposal to budget a near $50,000 cannabis ordinance. There has been many who have chimed in from both sides of this proposal on Fortuna happenings. I, for one, message my council, my concerns. It seems to me there is a lot of hostility and anger towards anyone who is against a dispensary in the friendly city. It was said that Fortuna is the unfriendly city with uneducated and outdated and old ci- old residents. To this statement, I will say Fortuna is friendly to all who are also friendly, those who are involved in the push for a cannabis dispensary or anything but friendly. In closing, the city does not need this revenue from this type of business. My husband and I are against the cannabis ordinance. Sincerely, Joe and Joyce Mitchell. And finally, Tammy Hall. I am a business owner as well as a homeowner in the city of Fortuna. I have a problem with approving $49,750 to authorize the city manager to hire an organization to prepare a commercial cannabis ordinance and program. It appears to me the city has poor money management. Just recently, a tax hike was denied, then immediately followed up by the city charging children's sports leagues $20,000 to $30,000 to use the parks to play their sports. At the same time, I'm seeing nice new vehicles with the city emblem on the side of them. I know there could be, have been less expensive options. Now you're talking about spending $50,000 towards something you don't know if it will pass. Is this money coming from what you are charging our kids sports? After telling us where the money will come to pay for this, I believe this issue should be on a ballot where the citizens of our city can cast a vote for or against cannabis to be set up in our city. In one aspect, the good news is we're not moving ahead with the $50,000. So at this time, that's off the table. At the other time, this is time for a public comment, if anybody has anything they'd like to speak on this item.
I'd like to say something about that. I think we can do better by our kids than having, you know, cannabis shops here in town. having, you know, cannabis shops here in town. My oldest son, you know, he graduated high school. Weed was prolific through high school. Doesn't make any smarter, I can just tell you that. My youngest son, he just transferred to Ferndale for many different reasons. But here in Fortuna, so many kids smoke weed. They bait, they, however, however they do it, they do it. So I'm not, I'm not against marijuana, you know, it has its place, but the trickle-down effect of it ends up in our kids, you know. You have the older brothers. You have, in fact, you have the parents giving it to them, okay? It's not the best thing for them. You know, the harder we can make it for them to access it, I think is better. Just my own personal opinion. But there's another, you know, facet to this. You know, I don't like to throw out something that is a possible revenue, you know, generator. I don't think it's going to be a whole lot, to tell you the truth, but we kind of have a golden egg right in our backyard for generating revenue, okay? We have a sports complex that could be utilized all year round. There's other sports complexes that do very well. You know, this is an area, it's beautiful, people would want to come here. So yeah, so just an example I want to throw out there. Medford Sports Park, last year, generated 13.4 million in direct economic value to the city. Okay, since 2008, when it was constructed, 173 million in economic impact. So something to think about, you know. I know there's grants out there. We're a very economically disadvantaged, you know, area here. So I think we can do better than something, you know, like a cannabis ordinance, you know. You've got to look at the big picture down the road, too, you know. Something like that, what Joe was talking about, could generate funds for this. You know, there's grants, there's all sorts of things that could make this happen, you know. Just this last year, 1,800 teams visited Medford. That's a lot, that's a lot of people, okay? 240,000 visitors to town, pouring money into town. Yeah, youth baseball, 378 teams arrived in that, in that town, okay? Fast pitch, girls softball, 156 teams ended up in their town. So it's something to think about. Like I said, we have it right here. It's just a little more tweaking on it, and it takes, you know, a city to run it, because this is all a city-run park. You know, there's, there's revenue to be generated by-
One more minute.
-having large, okay, by having large businesses name the park for a nice amount of money. You charge admission in these parks, okay? I've been doing the travel ball thing for many years, and, you know, it's, it's a thousand bucks, you know, plus, to take your kid to a travel ball game. So there's money there that people spend on their kids, you know. Another thing, too, is we have that here.
Thirty seconds.
Our kids, you know, the kids in the local area will actually be able to participate in a travel.
I have a daughter that plays softball. I mean, a granddaughter, I mean, two granddaughters.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I may be reaching out to you about that. Any other public comment? We do have a three-minute time limit, but you, this is the opportunity.
Su Long, I think most people that are here in the audience are against the cannabis ordinance, but I think they don't want to come up and hear and speak. Am I right? So going back several years when cannabis was legalized, the city came out in droves and said, no. That's why it was not adopted in Fortuna. That's why we did not do that at that time. In the meantime, cannabis industry's kind of died. Things have changed. We're talking $15,000 a year, you guys. You're spending a whole lot of time and energy for $15,000 a year. Are you kidding? I feel like I should come up here and tell you guys that's a great idea, because you seem to do everything opposite of what I think you should do. We haven't had anybody come tonight who says they want this. You guys need to think about that. You guys work for the constituents. The people who came out before who wanted it did not live in Fortuna, so please keep that in mind when people are speaking. Make sure they are voters in your city. And the other people that were for it were in the business, so it benefited them directly, and that's why they wanted it. So keep your eyes open, keep your minds open, and let's not go down a path of wasting a whole bunch of staff time, a whole bunch of council time, and a whole bunch of just resources for $15,000 a year. Come on, you guys. Let's change directions, let's find something else that will work, that will benefit our city, that will benefit our families, and doesn't look like this. You're so far out on this anyway, that by the time you can make an ordinance, spend money on an ordinance, get a tax ballot, or a ballot, a tax, what is it, cannabis tax on the ballot, we're still talking two years before any of that happens. You, now you don't have a business that's open. They still have to go through all of the state regulations and do all of things. That's super distracting. And it's just, yeah, let's rethink this. Come on, you guys. You work for the citizens of Fortuna.
Any other comment? Okay. We have none. I will close public comment, and the staff report that I have here isn't the same as, but there is no decision to be made tonight.
There's, there's no action at this point in time.
So as I said, there is no, there is no money being spent for an ordinance. There's no, nothing moving forward from this time. So we'll move to item C, which is conduct the annual hearing for the, public hearing for the Fortuna Business Improvement District Assessment and consider opting, adopting Resolution 2025-12.
Mayor, give me a moment as I share my screen. All right. There we go. Okay, slightly delayed. All right, here we go. So we have a public hea-, oh, have you, did you open the public hearing? I'm sorry.
Well, we have not opened the public hearing specifically at this time.
Okay. You're waiting for my presentation. Okay, sorry, just double checking. On March 3, the council approved the FBIT annual report for fiscal year 2425 as presented. The annual report contained a recommendation to levy a simplified flat assessment of $25 per business for fiscal year 2526. There are approximately 660 businesses in the city of Fortuna, and a flat $25 assessment would generate an estimated $16,500. As a reminder, no assessment was levied for fiscal year 2425. On April 7, the council adopted a resolution of intention, and it accomplished the following. It approved the FBIT annual report as submitted on March 3, which proposed changes to the assessment rates and the dissolution of three core areas, declared the council's intention to levy and collect the annual FBIT assessment for fiscal year 2526 at a flat rate of $25 per qualifying business, and it also provided notice of this public hearing and the right of businesses subject to the annual assessment to write a written or oral protest against the assessment. The purpose of this public hearing is to determine whether the FBIT annual assessment should be levied for 2526. The council may authorize the assessment unless sufficient written protests against the assessment are received by the city clerk at or before the fixed time of the public hearing. And I do believe at this point in time, we have not received any written protest, protests. Protest is successful if written protests are received from the owners of businesses in the assessment area, which will pay 50% or more of the assessments proposed to be levied. And protests are not withdrawn, so as to reduce the protest to less than 50%. The council must also consider oral protests during the public hearing, but only written protests that meet the content requirements are counted for purposes of determining whether the protest is successful. Each written protest must contain a description of the business in which the person submitting the protest is affiliated, sufficient to identify the business, and if a person submitting it, submitting is not shown on the official records of the city as the owner of the business, the protest must contain or be accompanied by written evidence that the person submitting is the owner of the business. And the city council may waive any irregularity in the form or content of any written protest, but again, at this point in time, we do not believe we have any. If the protest is successful, 331-plus written protests, the council may not levy the assessment for that, for the particular fiscal year. If the protest is not successful, the council may authorize and levy the assessment by adopting Resolution 2025-12. If the protest is not successful, staff recommends that the council adopt the proposed resolution. And that concludes the report.
Any questions from council for... Well, at this time, we'll open the public hearing if anyone has any comments to make on this item, or has a protest they wish to register. This would be the time to do that. It appears there is none. We can close the public hearing.
It's my understanding that this is just for next year, and then they're working on a scale for the following year. Am I correct?
The FBIT ad hoc did want to just start with a flat assessment, and then part of the reason that was brought forward was because that was slightly more simplified, and the FBIT ad hoc was interested in a tiered system, and with Invoice Cloud coming online in our finance department, a tiered system would be more doable in fiscal year 2627.
Okay.
Sounds like the protest is unsuccessful, correct?
It is.
Correct.
Okay. Then I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-12, read by title only.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Resolution 2025-12, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, authorizing the levy of an annual assessment for 2025-2026 fiscal year for the Fortuna Business Improvement District. Councilmember Conley.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Trent, or Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. And now we will move to item D, conduct second reading and adopt ordinance 2025-774, amending the Fortuna Business Improvement District regulations.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. This is the second step in the changes to the Fortuna Business Improvement District. So before your council this evening is the second reading by title only to adopt ordinance 2025-774, which amends the FBIT, which amends the Fortuna Business Improvement District. And those changes include dissolving the three existing benefit core areas, the downtown not care core area, the Redwood Village Shopping Center Core Area, and the Strong's Creek Plaza Core Area. In addition, it revises the section imposing the benefit assessment to allow the council to set the method and basis for calculating the annual assessment through the annual reauthorization process required by the Street and Highways Code. It deletes certain definitional provisions that are no longer applicable to an annual assessment based upon a flat rate. The ordinance modifications also include revising the composition of the advisory committee to remove requirements for representation from the three core areas, further revises the composition of the advisory committee to reduce the number of members from seven to five, and specifies that four members shall be from among the following industries: retail, professional and service, hospitality, manufacturing, or wholesale, and to, one of the city, in a city council liaison will also be a member of the committee. And again, it removes the requirement that funds be allocated to the three core areas, and instead provides that all funds raised within the district shall be used to promote the entire community, and it maintains the principal purpose for which the district was formed. And therefore, staff recommends these changes to be consistent, and as recommended by the advisory committee in its annual report, which was previously approved at your April 7 meeting. And that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for...
When it, when it's proposed to benefit the entire community, do they mean the entire business community, or just Fortuna as a whole?
I would say Fortuna as a whole. Typically, it is that it has been the business community that has done a lot of, has done a lot of the events. There, there's also a lot of volunteer groups, too, but a lot of the businesses have supported the events.
We have no comments up here, questions? How about open public comment? And if there's any comments from the public, this is the time to bring them. Not a lot of people coming up, so at this time, we'll close public comment and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to conduct second reading and adopt read by title only ordinance 202025-774.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Ordinance 2025-774, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna, California, amending Chapter 5.40, Fortuna Business Improvement District of the Fortuna Municipal Code, in determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. And as I said, we, my, item E has been removed and will be brought back at May 19 meeting. So this brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. We have, well, we had the upcoming special workshop today for the budget meeting at 5 o'clock, and then we have Monday, May 19 at 6 o'clock, and Monday, June 2 at 6 o'clock for the city council. Planning Commission will meet May 13 and May 27 at 6:00 p.m. The next Measure E meeting is September 16 at 5:30 p.m. The next Ronerville Recreation and Park District meeting is June 4 at 8:30 p.m., excuse me. FBIT is at 8:30 a.m. on July 22 and October 28. And just to give your council some information on what I've been up to, I've attended the FBIT meeting on April 22. Myself and the city manager in Eureka and Arcata and other staff continue to work with Recology on negotiations. We had an informative sales tax meeting with HDL. We also held our first Revenue Generation Ad Hoc Committee meeting, in which we talked about some of the significant cuts that the city may be facing in the future if a sales tax measure is not passed. And we were reporting that back to you at the May 19 meeting, where we'll be going over those significant reductions. And then we also began work on strategic planning, because we do still want to have a vision for this city and the future, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Well, any future agenda items? Seeing none, so we will do council reports, starting with Councilmember Conley.
Yes, we had a redact meeting late last month, got to approve a couple loans, and had a program on the fishing industry, a nice little program, and to kind of hear how they're working to bring the fishing community together and to kind of talk about how solar, our wind event and power and all that stuff will affect them, and be in a voice for California fishing, fishing industry in our area. Some good presentation, but other than that's it.
I did just think of something we can look for a future, and that is looking at our council member assignments and committees. As, I know that we did it when new council member Diaz came on, but we may shuffle- member Diaz came on, but we may shuffle a little bit more now that council member Stevens is here.
Absolutely, we can bring that forward either May nineteenth or June second.
And this is an opportunity for you, if you have anything city-wide. Any council member reports? Anything that you thank the people, that-
Well, I guess I did, you know, kind of related to the cannabis business item, I did do a little homework on that, just to satisfy my own curiosity. I think Sue had mentioned, you know, fifteen thousand as potential revenue, I think, just my, you know, unkind of educated, you know, back-of-the-envelope calculations, using the state's data on like per capita cannabis sales in Humboldt County, kind of looked to me like, and if there was cannabis sales in Fortuna, could be two to three million dollars in sales, so if property tax, or I'm sorry, sales taxes were, you know, whatever, a fraction of that, it would be kind of proportional to that. If, for instance, there was a tax measure that added an extra five or ten thousand onto it, it could maybe generate another, you know, hundred, two hundred thousand in revenue, who's kind of my kind of guesstimate, or kind of rough estimates, I think that was kind of a big question on, is it, is it an opportunity for the, the city to, you know, close the budget shortfall? And obviously, you know, a lot of the members of the public are kind of, you know, pretty vocal about it, so I think it's, you know, I think kind of a controversial issue, but, you know, the, the amount of revenue might generate, might not be as much as everyone is thinking it might, could be.
Well, well, it remains to be seen in the future. We have a tax company that works with us that predicts those rates, so they will bring it up, but Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Okay, on, let's see, the twenty-second of last month, the board supervisors had their meeting and approved the Drug Task Force and the School Resource Officer, thank you very much. So we're happy to have those positions renewed for another year. And Sheri Meads and myself, Sheri over here, attended the League of Women Voters Luncheon. Michelle usually speaks at that, she was down in Sacramento taking care of business for our whole county, so she wasn't there, but they gave pretty much a state of the county report, so the luncheon was very well attended, and the program was very good. So that was very interesting to go to. And on May first, I attended a meeting at Providence Hospital in Eureka with a lot of the upper board members and doctors and community members from, or people, the head people from Open Door and, and all the other hospitals around here, talking about bringing doctors in, and some of the things that they have accomplished, so it does look a little bit better than it did. They are actually using some Zoom meetings for some doctors, and they've got some good ideas for the future, so that was a pretty interesting meeting going to that. And I am also on the HOPS committee along with Kyle right here, and we just last night approved five scholarships, five one thousand dollar scholarships for high school students, so I'm very happy to say that HOPS is giving back five thousand dollars to our students, so that was a big accomplishment, or, and we were all pretty much in agreement on that, so that was good, and that's pretty much all I have to report.
All right, thank you. And I attended an HCOG meeting in April that did not get reported on yet, but there was a lot of things done for that. We had proclamation for Bike Month and some of the activities going on, different communities having bike rodeos, and opportunity to teach bike safety to students. I know that, not associated with the Bike Month, but I know the Fortuna Kiwanis partners with the Walker Elementary and does a bike rodeo at the end of the month in May, so that's something to look forward to. We also received our, HCOG received its audit on itself and the transit agencies, including Fortuna Senior Bus, to make sure we're all in compliance, and happy to say that we're all, the, HCOG itself was in compliance, there was a few little things for some of the agencies that were not quite up to snuff, but nothing fatal, and Fortuna was also one that didn't quite get up the ten percent Fairbox recovery, and I know that that's a project that we're working on right now already. Moving, we also allocated for Trinidad and the city of Arcata some LTF funds for Trinidad paving, and for a bike and pedestrian path in Arcata. Looking also ahead on that, this was the Unmet Transit Needs Hearing and Report of Findings, and reconvened as the board and did an update on our signatories for, because we now have another director, or another executive director, our own Brendan Bird, and unfortunately, fortunately and unfortunately, talk about a bittersweet thing with him leaving here, but I still work with him there, so that's, and while the CSAC Conference was going on, the League of California Cities Conference was going on for the City Leaders Summit, and I'd like to thank Supervisor Bushnell for her hospitality with CSAC hosting the meet and greet networking at the end of the first day, and that was a good time had by all. Very crowded, not a lot of room to move, and so, but we also seriously did get a lot of work done, got to go down to the Capitol, go meet with our Assembly Member Chris Rogers, who took Jim Wood's seat here, got to meet with him, and got to go down on the Assembly floor and see the, the old antique desk from the original Capitol, when they moved in there, and the way things work, and they even changed the sign to welcome League of California Cities to the Assembly Floor. But we did meet in that, we got to sit in on a bunch of different seminars, including how to have a good working relationship and a well-functioning city council with city manager relationship, which is important, I believe. So that's all I have to report on at this time. Any other things to? Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.